Let's go ahead and move on to item six point two or nine oh six AM item. Consideration of update on COVID nineteen. Dr. Pace, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Chair and supervisors. Thanks for having us again today. So I'm gonna try to be a little bit briefer today. We are for a quick overview, we're continuing to see improvement in the cases, although we're not yet in the numbers for the red tiers. We are seeing some improvement and Sarah will show that in just a minute. The vaccines are continuing to roll out, we're getting more vaccine each week now and so we're putting it out as quickly as we can and those are, I'll talk a little bit about the variants and about the blueprint changes and about the vaccine today, but maybe Sarah can go first and give an overview of the data.
Good morning, everyone. I have a few slides to share. Statewide, we continue to see positive friends. Testing positivity statewide is down to two point two percent, that's the fourteen day average. Testing has continued to decline as well. In California, we've identified three point five million cases. The fourteen day average continues to decline, not as rapidly as it was in the last couple of weeks, but it does continue to decline. Just two days ago, about thirty three hundred new cases were reported. Over fifty four thousand deaths to date have been reported in the state of California. We continue to see improvement in the reduction of hospitalized patients and people in the ICU due to COVID. Down to about forty two hundred people hospitalized yesterday statewide and about eleven hundred people in the ICU. In Lake County, as Dr. Pace said, our metrics remain in the purple tier. Later today, it'll be announced that we have a daily case rate of nine point two per a hundred thousand. This is down from last week, we were about eleven last week and the week prior, we were about fifteen, so it is declining. And our testing positivity was up slightly from the previous week at six point three percent last week, it was closer to five percent. The map that showing here were the tier assignments made a week ago. The state will announce the new tier assignments later today. Can I imagine seeing a few more counties turn move into the red tier, though I believe neighbors in Mendocino and Sonoma County will remain in the purple tier like Lake County. And here's the Epi curve, which shows us the number of new cases by episode week. So the week making up our tier assignment this week is the week of February twenty first through the twenty seventh, whereas of this morning, forty eight cases were identified. For the week we just finished, beginning February twenty eighth, we have identified twenty five cases. As of today, we'll continue to identify new cases this week as lab reports come in, but we're watching this really closely, hoping to continue to see a decline each week. And just a quick update on progress with vaccines, about ten thousand one hundred residents have received one dose, this has been about eight hundred in the last week and this is twenty percent of the Lake County adult population has received one dose. About fifty two hundred residents have received their second dose and this is about a thousand more in the last week and this is about ten percent. This means ten percent of the adult population in Lake County has received their second dose. And total doses administered to Lake County residents is about fifteen thousand four hundred. And quickly, we'll look at vax first doses by age group and race ethnicity. So fifty one percent of people seventy five years in age and older have received one dose, that's about twenty seven hundred people. And there's about fifty three hundred people seventy five years of age or older in Lake County, so that's fifty one percent of folks, they make up, this is new from last week. People seventy five years of age and older make up eight percent of your total population and that's what this number in this column represents here, so to look at sixty five to seventy four year olds, about thirty nine hundred, thirty eight hundred people have received one dose, this is about out of a population of about ninety one hundred people. That's forty two percent of people sixty five to seventy four have received one dose and people sixty five to seventy four make up about fourteen percent of your county population. Over last week also saw some improvement, increasing vaccination coverage in some of the younger age groups shown here. Seventeen percent of white non Hispanic residents and ten percent of Latino residents have received one dose. So we'll start at the top of the table, about seventy six hundred white non Hispanic residents have received one dose, this is out of population of about forty four thousand, forty four, four hundred people. And that's seventeen percent of the white non Hispanic population have received one dose, they make up about sixty nine percent of the total population in Lake County. About fourteen hundred people who are Latino received, have received one dose at about fourteen thousand two hundred people for about ten percent of the Latino population in Lake County and they make up about twenty two percent of the total county population. And just a reminder, as we highlighted last week, the Native American data is not accurate, these data are pulled from one of the state systems that does not include doses administered through Indian Health Service. So I'll just continue to write, remind folks as we look at these numbers. And that's all I have for the update today.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interrupt for a brief moment, I wanted to make you aware that we're we're not live on Facebook at this point, our videographer is investigating what the problem is, there's some sort of error code. And he's working on it right now, so this, this update that people watching on Facebook are missing part of will be uploaded later. And, and the videographer is working to restore access right now as well, so I wanted you to be aware of that limitation at this moment.
I'm wondering if if Sam knows if he needs five minutes, ten minutes, or if it is it an unknown situation to diagnose as far as how long it might take to fix?
I believe Sam can hear you, so hopefully he'll respond to that, Sam, are you able to respond?
If it's possible to post a link on our Facebook page to our Granicus so that people can know to look at it there. Cause I know that a lot of people do watch it through social media, we have a pretty large population of Lake County that is on social media. So just wanted to see if we can at least do that to try to steer people towards where they can see it. Cause I think this is all one of the reasons why we have so many people watching us every week is for updates such as these.
Yes, I just put in that request to our public information officer and I also who's working on this as well, I asked him if he can give us an estimate of how long it's going to take to do the fix and I'm not getting a reply, which is probably an indicator they're working on it, so I'll keep you posted, but, but regardless, it will be viewable later, it's not like the video has not been captured.
Right.
But I know how important these reports are to the public and I, we apologize for the inconvenience, not sure what has caused this.
So at this moment, since the Facebook stream is only a one way stream and not a interaction with us, but folks here on Zoom are able to interact with us, I'm looking at the board. I'm thinking that we just move on and we make sure that we get that available to everybody once we have that taken care of, is that okay with everybody on the board? Okay. I got two nods and I say yes, so that's, that's good enough. Sorry for the interruption, Sarah and Dr. Pace, but please keep going.
Thank you and thanks, Sarah, for the, for the information, so I think a couple of things to point out there is we are making progress with the vaccines, the about ten thousand people have gotten their first doses now in the county, which is really good and and you can see in the vaccine data that the seventy five year olds and above have over fifty percent and a lot of that was, you know, that's success, I think, as far as what we were trying to do, we were really trying to target the most vulnerable folks first. And that was done a lot with the help of the senior centers and with the Department of Social Services helping out and so, you know, that, there was a big push within the community to try to get those folks taken care of and to get half of that part of the community vaccinated is a really good, good thing and so the other thing to point out is the the number of cases, so and to move into the red tier, there's two pieces of data that are important, one is the test positivity rate. And we've been in the red tier for the test positivity for several weeks now, the other is the case rate. We need to be below seven per a hundred thousand, which, which equals about thirty three cases per week. We were about forty five last week, we are now at about twenty eight. But there are still some results coming in, so we're, we're getting close, you know, it's, whether we stay under the, the threshold for this week or not, we don't know. It's still, even if we get in for this week, it's still another week after that, so we're looking at in the next couple of weeks being able to move into the red tier if things continue the way they're going. So the state has made some changes that they are doing around the blue, what they call the blueprint, which is the essentially the restrictions on business and activity. And once we get to two million doses in California in some of the highest risk areas, then which they have a very kind of complex definition for, but once we get to two million doses, they're gonna loosen up some of the restrictions, so the idea is that once more people are vaccinated, the, the threat is less in the community and so they'll be able to loosen up some of the restrictions to move from purple to red, we'd be able to do, we'd be able to do it right about now with the current data, so you know, that's coming, I think probably within the next month, that, that they'll get this two million threshold and then they can loosen things up. The other thing is, is they have started to put out some guidance around outdoor activities, around youth sports and other things like that, especially things that happen outside, they're starting to loosen that up more and, and allow a little more flexibility, the, the ones with the outdoor like concerts and festivals and stuff is, will be starting to go into effect April first, but it's, it's looser than it was last year, so that's the good news, I think as we've learned more about the way the virus spreads that there's gonna be a little more flexibility with some of the outdoor activities than they were allowing last year. To mention a little bit about the variants, there's no significant developments in the, in our area in the last week. The, the, what they're calling the West Coast variant is continuing to spread. The one study that's been done on it seems to indicate that it's less worrisome than we were originally concerned about, so I'm sure there will be more data coming out over the coming weeks, but that, that was somewhat reassuring, the other ones, the ones that are more worrisome, the variants of concern, they call them. The, the UK variant, the South African variant, the Brazil variant. The UK variant is spreading around the state, but we're not seeing the big surge in cases that we were worried about originally. Whether that's gonna continue or not, we'll have to see, but so at this point, we're, this week, we're a little more reassured than we were the last couple of weeks. And that still remains to be seen how that goes, so to talk about the vaccine. There's a lot of things moving all at the same time. The state is trying to do this whole management process with what they call the TPA, the Third Party Administrator via Blue Shield. There's a big struggle going on with that, a lot of the counties are not wanting to sign the contract that they put out, you may, there's been some articles in the papers about it. It looks like the state is going to do this TPA and so they're just kind of, there's, there's some chess game going on right now about who's gonna have responsibility for what, but I'm pretty sure this is going to roll out one way or the other. The My Turn, which is the, the software platform for appointments and for data sharing and stuff. We're still having a lot of technical issues here in Lake County with it, we're, we're continuing to try to work with them about it, but it's, we're just not having much luck getting things resolved. We were supposed to start next week on the My Turn platform, it still remains to be seen if we're gonna have access by then and so we'll just continue using what we're using until we're able to make the switch, we're mandated to make the switch and so you know, they're trying to help us get on and we're just still working with that. So then the vaccine itself, we're continuing to roll it out, you saw the numbers that Sarah had, it's, you know, it's slower than we want, we're getting somewhere between fifteen hundred it looks like this week we'll get three thousand doses and that's first and second doses combined. You know, now we're getting to where we were doing about a thousand a week, a couple of weeks ago, and if we only get two thousand doses, that means we get a thousand for the second doses and a thousand for the first doses, so that's why you're seeing kind of the numbers increase slowly, but, but steadily now. We, we are redistributing some to Sutter and Adventist because their, their supply chains seem to not be working as well as they were originally, the idea was these big corporate chains were supposed to be supplying their, all their people with vaccine, but they don't seem to have as much as they thought they were gonna have, so we're just, we're trying to keep them going as well. The sites are working well, we are able to expand the Lakeport site, it looks like the Clear Lake site is about as much as is handling about as many people, about, about six hundred a day as possible. We're having to start to consider maybe going to just one day in Lakeport, three days in Clear Lake, because it seems like we're starting to we're starting to get a sense that in Lakeport, the demand is getting fairly well taken care of, whereas in Clear Lake, that's not the case and so we may have to make a shift now to to shift to having an extra day in Clear Lake, but we'll see, we're, we're still kind of trying to feel that out and see how much vaccine we're actually gonna get this week. Staffing continues to be an issue, we've hired some more temporary staff and that's better. But you know, this is just going to be an ongoing issue, some of our staff are, are starting to hit the wall in their ability to be able to continue at this pace. The priorities are a big deal and so the state is continuing with the current priorities, we are totally aligned with the state priorities at this point, so that's one A, the healthcare workers. Anybody who didn't get done can get done now, the education workers, including preschool and childcare and college age, college folks and emergency workers and they've expanded some of that out to include janitors now. Disaster service workers for, that are people that are helping with congregate living situations or like emergency shelters and things like that. And homeless workers, public transit workers, utility workers, so this is all an expansion from, of the definition of emergency workers that the state has done and it's either on their website now or it's going to be in the next day or two, so these folks are all able to be vaccinated now, they just need to make an appointment just like everybody else and if there's some question about that, they can go on the state website and see where they fit in. Starting March fifth, which is Monday, people with chronic medical issues that are aged sixteen to sixty four will now be eligible. There's a specific list of the medical issues, but it's fairly vague. What we are really asking people to do is to get a note from their medical provider that says they qualify, the note should say that there, it should have their name and their date of birth and to state that from their medical provider that this person qualifies. We don't need to know what the condition is, that's protected and that's not important, but your, your medical provider should look at the, at the list of the conditions that the state allows and determine whether you make, make that or not. If somebody does not, and then people will make an appointment on the website, so we haven't opened up next week yet, but once we are sure of our number of vaccine, you can, we'll open up the, those links, you can go onto our webpage and find a link, open up for an appointment and it'll ask you how you qualify, you can just say cause of the medical condition. You need to bring in your ID and your letter to the, to the site and we'll have people at the front gate checking. And if you don't have the letter, we're gonna turn you away. If you have a particular extenuating circumstance and you have some other kind of proof of your condition, we'll look at it and try to make a determination then, but there's a lot of people coming in, you know, we've got five hundred or so people coming through every day. So you know, we don't wanna back up the lines, kind of trying to sort through what people's situation is. It's much better to have some kind of written documentation and do that, the the other thing is if you don't have a medical provider, you can send in your information to our MOOC line and I'll look at it, make a determination and make a list of people. So if that's the situation you're doing, you'll have to put your medical situation in the notes so I can actually make the determination. So you know, it's, it's gonna open up the queue a lot larger by, by adding these folks in, but we definitely wanna get these people taken care of and so if you or your family member falls in that situation, I really encourage you to try to get in touch with your medical provider soon to get the letter. If you have trouble with that, bring in some kind of proof of your medical condition. And it looks like I'll probably be up at the site, kind of helping people sort through this, I probably won't be there Tuesday because I'll have to be here, but other days I plan to be there next week. So the, for appointments, we're, the situation's working okay now, it's better than it was, we're putting the links up on the website as soon as we make the, the appointments available and we're basically waiting till we're sure how much vaccine we have, then we make the appointments and then put the links out, so if you're looking for a first dose appointment, just, and you're qualified, go on the site and keep looking. We're still, at this point, we're doing a couple of days in Lakeport, a couple of days in Clear Lake and we open them up a few days in advance. If you can't, if you don't have internet access or you can't get on the site, you can call some of the numbers that are on our website, there's one specifically for the seniors and there's one for farm workers and other folks that are Spanish speakers and so you know, we're just continuing to go along like that, the the second dose appointments, we're starting to put the links up for those, so we were trying to contact everybody by phone and that we just weren't able to keep up, so we are still trying to get in touch with people, especially people that clearly don't have internet access, but we're emailing about where to get the links and the links are also on our webpage. You know, we're doing the same thing just a couple of days in advance, if you got your first dose, if you have the Moderna, anywhere between four and six weeks is totally fine, there's no problem if you, if it's two weeks late. It's probably no problem if you go much later than that, there doesn't seem to be any real concern about that, but the idea is to try to get it between four to six weeks after your first dose. There's a, a lot of talk in the media about the equity issues, so this is the issues of disparity between certain groups having access to the vaccine. The ones that are most at risk from getting problems from COVID are the ones that seem to be getting vaccinated at the lowest rate. So we're trying to do what we can to, to accommodate those folks and help them, help remove any barriers to getting vaccinated. There's a lot of effort at the state level to try to address this. And when, one of the things they're focusing on, you may see this in the media, so I just wanted to comment on it briefly, is that they're focusing on the zip codes that are felt to be the highest vulnerable populations in the state and those zip codes are gonna get more vaccine than other zip codes and so it's a little bit complicated, but basically the idea is since those people are more at risk from getting the COVID illness, that they're trying to get those areas vaccinated more and so they're, they're sending more vaccine that way. In Lake County, we have six of our zip codes are in that category, so it should lead to a little bit more vaccine for us in the county, we'll see how this actually plays out, but this is kind of what the governor's plan is to help address this. The Ethics Committee did meet again last week and I was just gonna go ahead and kind of read through their recommendations just so that it's transparent. The committee followed up on earlier requests and considered new requests received since its last meeting. Jail inmates, consistent with earlier recommendations, the committee recommends vaccine be prioritized for persons living in congregate situations, including jail inmates. So these were responses to specific questions, so the jail inmates, we did get all the inmates that were interested in getting vaccine, got vaccinated on Friday, the first dose. Public defenders, the committee requests that public health attempt to obtain information on the level of court activity presently taking place to enable further consideration of the impacts of prioritizing vaccine for this group. So this was a request from the public defenders to be considered and the, so we've put in a request for how much contact they're having with the public right now and trying to let the committee make that decision. My understanding is the state has continued to say that court personnel and lawyers are not in the, in the emergency worker tier. Although some counties went ahead and did it anyhow, but the state's been pretty clear about their guidance and they were supposed to come with some clarification about it in the near future. Intellectually disabled, medical fragile, medically fragile adults. The committee notes that this group is being prioritized according to state guidance starting March fifteenth, next Monday, so we talked about that already. Food service and ag workers responding to an inquiry as to why this group is being prioritized, given that the virus is not known to be passed through food. The committee notes that current indicators show that the spread primarily occurs through face to face contact. And this group has been prioritized according to state guidance on this basis, so that's the response to that question. County workers, the committee has considered requests concerning air quality workers, disaster service workers providing sheltering services and staff to the Emergency Operations Center. The committee notes that according to updated state guidance released three one twenty one, these groups are now eligible for vaccine and shouldn't be allowed to begin scheduling appointments. The committee recommends that public health continue to prioritize persons over sixty five and ag and food service workers and if possible, to reserve vaccine appointments for this priority group. So what that's saying is, is that they're recommending that we open it up to the air quality workers, the disaster service workers who provide sheltering services and staff to the EOC. And the state now has opened that up as well, so they, they've clarified that in some of their guidance, so that, that is happening now, so if people fall in that group, they can go ahead and get, get appointments. Clergy, there was a request for a certain clergy that we're having a lot of contact with the public, the committee recommends that vaccine be prioritized for clergy who in the normal course of their duties regularly visit hospitals, jails, nursing homes, hospice patients, elderly ill patients, mortuaries and have frequent contact with the community in general, including ag workers. So the clergy, the meatback qualification can go ahead and sign up as well. Summary, the committee continues to reaffirm its earlier recommendations focusing on persons most at risk of death. Continue to prioritize vaccine to sixty five plus and ag workers with emphasis on outreach and addressing logistical details impacting these populations, continue to offer vaccine to new persons at homeless shelters, food service workers, i.e. grocers and restaurants. C two C above for updated recommendations, which I mentioned. The committee continues to acknowledge that the situation is very fluid and anticipates that its recommendations will change with each passing week. So again, if people have questions or concerns that they want the committee to take into advisement, they can send it into the MOOC email and we'll, we'll pass it along. And I think that's really the end of what I wanted to talk about today, you know, overall we are continuing to be optimistic that things are improving, where it's looking like we will be able to move in the red tier in the coming weeks. And vaccine has continued to roll out, it looks like the supply will at least continue at this level. And I, the thinking is, is probably in about a month, it's going to considerably increase. One, oh, one thing I didn't mention is we do have the Johnson and Johnson vaccine has arrived. We are going to be administering it on Thursday, so if people feel like, that, we don't really feel like there's any advantage of the Pfizer versus the Moderna versus the Johnson and Johnson, except for the Johnson and Johnson is only one dose. So if somebody's in a group where they would benefit from just having, you know, that they aren't gonna be around next month or they're in a very mobile population or there's somebody who has a lot of trouble leaving the house and to get the second dose is a real hardship, they should go ahead and sign up for this Thursday if they qualify. But you know, so we're seeing these things expand, the vaccine rollout is, is doing pretty well, the, these shifts with the state taking over things and sort of trying to implement new software and things are gonna be a little tricky to navigate, but overall we are as much vaccine as we're able to get, we're getting it into people's arms and it's going as fast as we possibly can at this point, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace, before I open it up for the rest of the board, just real quick, is it possible to put that those Ethics Committee recommendations online to make it very transparent and open to the public to read and view?
Sure, you want us to put it on the website?
I, I think that would be really useful for everyone to be able to read through it rather than just having to listen to it or maybe read it. or maybe read it through the media, I think having the direct message from the committee, I think would be great. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Crandall.
Dr. Pace, thank you for the report. Just wanted to touch base, I I reached out to Ernesto Padilla from Tribal Health. I wanted to see if you were able to get in contact with them. He said he could share the numbers that they have for vaccinations, I'm not sure if that took place or if I if you need any help facilitating that.
Well, again, he had shared the numbers with me once before, let me see, but they don't register at the state level. And so we don't get credit for them, even if we, so we can pat ourselves on the back for having that much more of the population vaccinated, which is great. But let's see, I can find what I have got from him. But it's in terms of the state parameters, it's not gonna change anything unless it goes in through their one portal, which is through the care system, the vaccine state thing, so.
So it's it's so we need to figure out how we can get the state to inject that information into their system so we can get credit for it.
Yeah, and he Ernesto and I had some contact last week, I I actually after the board meeting and he said his people are working, I think this is a statewide issue, it's not just our local tribal clinic. It's a it's a problem with everybody that's doing it through the through Indian health. But yeah, in our county, it's probably, we're probably one of the counties where it's the most significant because tribal health has done such a great job. I mean, they've done, I think they've done a thousand folks and so, you know, we're only getting credit for ten thousand so far. So that's, you know, that's ten percent. So that's a significant number of vaccine in a small county like ours, so I'll I'll see if I can find what he said.
I I think the last situational report that we got, Dr. Fair, Mr. Chair, if I could interene on this. I think the numbers were up to fifteen hundred, you know, from tribal health, both native and non non-native. I did put out a request to, essentially it'd be great to have those numbers directly here each week. I did put out a request to Ernesto also, don't know if he can join today, but he may not be able to. But I will say that last week, I know myself was on a call with Carrie West of C D P H. I think she also talked to some other members, but this was a main question asking about those numbers. And from the conversation with Carrie West of C D P H, the Government Affairs, this is one that hopefully, whether we like the answer or not, hopefully we'll have an answer by Wednesday. What the problem is and how we can move forward is hopefully trying to solve that. Because ultimately, like you said, we want credit. Everybody's working hard locally on the ground here and we want to make sure that those numbers are getting at the state level. So I know I had a call on Friday afternoon, I think she spoke with a couple, at least one other board member to talk about the rollout. And, you know, so hopefully we'll have some answers to that here sooner than later.
Thank you, Moak. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Supervisor Pisca.
So it when we move to the My Turn app, which I think we're gonna have to, is there gonna be geosensing incorporated in the application to kind of prevent the vaccine tourism that we've experienced?
Well, this is a big issue. So what they've, what the state has reluctantly conceded to is that through March, we will be able to exclude people from out of county. After March thirty first, I guess, they are not going to allow that to happen anymore. And so the idea is that they wanna make, they wanna remove all obstacles from people getting vaccinated. So I I'm not aware of geosensing or anything like, my understanding is is that they there's not good ways to incorporate this into the software, but they have some mechanisms where we can set aside specific small clinics to sort of only allow it to be with people in the county. But the at the big sites, they're going to, we're still gonna have to allow it. And and it's a little bit of a gray zone for the rest of the month. But, you know, by the time we get on, that's probably only gonna be two weeks. I think what their thought process is, is that there's gonna be enough facts, it's not gonna matter that much anymore. But, you know, it doesn't, there's a disconnect between what they're doing, focusing on equity and focusing on the hardest to reach people and then allowing everybody to come in. So because the folks with the best transportation, the best internet access are the ones that are gonna get the appointments first. So it's a, you know, it's, I think it's different parts of the system trying to do different things and it doesn't line up. And it's a it's a problem for Lake County.
So we've got three weeks, basically, before this can open up to anybody that wants to come here again.
Well, right now, we're doing it through the old system. So and once we go to my turn, which probably will be next week, if we work out some of the kinks, there will be some ability to screen folks out and some ability not to. And then at least the current guidances is that starting people first, that we won't be able to limit.
And I'm I'm sorry if I missed it, but how many extra doses are we getting because we have the impacted zip codes?
It's not exactly clear, they're they're not able to give us that number at this point. That it's, this has been a very rapid rollout and they, the people we we get, I'm on calls with some pretty high level folks in charge of the vaccine stuff, but they don't seem to have that kind of numbers.
I believe that it was forty percent of the state's vaccines would go directly to those zip codes, but it's not a specific number.
Right, and then in each zip code, they're basically doubling it if they're high risk zip codes. So if, for example, if one of the zip codes, so we've got six of them, but some of them are very small numbers of people in it. And then they sort of determine what they think the allocation for that zip code should be. And if it's one of the high risk zip codes, they'll double it. But how much actual vaccine is gonna, that's going to mean, how much additional vaccine that means we're gonna get? They they don't seem to be able to tell us that at this point.
I know we still continue to have people coming into our county to get vaccinated.
Absolutely. Well, yeah, and part of what's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, go ahead, I'm just, I'm really concerned that we're not gonna be able to continue on this trajectory after the first of April.
Well, I think there's a lot of, you know, what you're pointing at is how well we're able to turn people away at the front gate of the vaccine site, right? So whether somebody's a farm worker or not, we're requesting, you know, proof of their work. We're with the, we're we're requesting proof of their address, but, you know, we're not catching everybody. Or people will say they have a second home up here and so we're letting them do that. What's gonna happen next week is this whole thing with the medical conditions. We're requesting, you know, these notes from their medical providers, but it's gonna be really hard for most people to get that by Monday. And so we're gonna be making, you know, there's a line of fifty cars trying to get into the drive in theater. And our poor folks are trying to determine who qualifies, whether they have a reservation, are they trying to scam us and all that? And when we tried to turn people away before, it was fairly challenging in some ways. And so we're doing the best we can and so far, we our people have done a great job. But yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna increase in complexity and intensity in the coming weeks for sure. And always, well, really, what we're trying to do is kind of rely on the honor system to a large extent. That works until it doesn't, you know.
Thank you.
Supervisor Scott.
You know, I definitely see that California, there's a complete disconnect if they're realizing we have high risk areas and they're giving more vaccine to those areas, but anybody living, you know, anywhere around can go into those areas and get the vaccine. That's just mind boggling that that's even going on. But actually, my question is, I have one group, our foster parents that are here in the county. I know they have a lot of turnover in their home, do they fit into any of these groups to be able to be vaccinated?
That's a good question, I think they, so they did do some expansions, let's see. Certified family homes, children's residential community care facilities. Let me, so.
You can get back to me on that one, I just know we already struggle here in Lake County with having enough foster homes for our children and they're and they're sent out of county. So I would hate for families to be waiting to get vaccinated to bring in another child into their home and then having another child be sent out of county. So I just wanted to speak up for that group.
I'll let you know.
Great, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I saw Ernesto Padilla from Tribal Health coming on, thank you Supervisor Simon for mentioning that. Since we've been speaking about tribal health, Mr. Padilla, would you like to speak to us about the status of the vaccine rollout through Tribal Health?
Uh, yes, thank you Supervisor. So, good morning, everyone. I I just wanna provide a little update on the vaccines and how we've been rolling it out at at Tribal Health. As you guys, as everyone may or may not know, we opt to receive our vaccines directly from from the I H S instead of it going through the state and then down through the county and then to us. So today, this as of last week, we inoculated about four hundred and eighty seven vaccines to natives and one thou- one thousand and seventy one to non-natives. And this is all Moderna. Now, we've held two mass vaccination clinics on February twentieth and twenty seventh, where we inoculated current tribal health patients that were fifty years of age and over. We have already inoculated all the natives eighteen and over that wished to have the vaccine before these mass vaccination clinics. So we started with the local consortium members, natives went down the priority phase for them. And then any natives in Lake County that are patients, they were over eighteen. So once we exhausted those patients from the list and we were calling them and making appointments, we opened it up to our non-native patient population and that's when we had the rolled out the mass vaccination clinic. So since it was a Moderna, they received the initial one on February twentieth, we'll have another clinic on March twentieth. Will they get their second vaccine, you know, twenty eight days later? And then the same for the clinic on the twenty seventh of February, the second vaccine will come in on the twenty seventh of March. This thirteenth of March or this Saturday coming up, we will have our another mass vaccination clinic. And this will be for new patients, will be the the Jansen, Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And we'll be rolling that out to our patients that are forty years of age and over or have chronic illnesses. So that's where we're at. We've received about five hundred of the Jansen, so this will make it easier for the stand downs or mass vaccination clinics, since we won't have to schedule a second one for these people to come through. At those clinics, I think we we vaccinated like two hundred on the first one, three hundred on the second one. And we expect, our goal is to get five hundred this Saturday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Any questions or comments directly to Tribal Health Director Padilla before we move on?
I'd just like to thank you, Ernesto, I know it was a last minute request to join today. I wanna thank you for the work being done for our native and non-native population. And I know you have been coordinating excellent with Dr. Gary Pace from the beginning of this. So I wanna thank both of you for the work to be done for our constituents here locally, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're very welcome. And just an update, I know our numbers weren't being reported up to the California Immunization Record System, but we fixed that bug yesterday. It was the way that they were being put into our electronic health record, so they should be rolling up. And and those numbers should be included in the aggregate for our county.
That's great news.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments from the supervisors? So I had a few questions. Dr. Pace, I know that it seems every week we're seeing social media posts saying we have extra vaccines or extra appointments available. Are you able to fill up all those appointments? Are you finding yourself with some leftover vaccine at the end of the week? How how is that working for us at this moment?
So what's happening is we are not having extra vaccines. So what we do is we're getting a certain amount every week and we're using it all up. Partly what's happening is like if we, yesterday, we had some extra slots that didn't get filled. It doesn't mean we lose vaccine, we don't, we don't open the vaccine up until we have the people there. So it's basically then that vaccine is saved and we either redistribute it to somebody else or we use it in some of the later on in the week. So it's, it's not that that's a lost opportunity, it's that it's available, the demand is there, people can get in. And but if they don't come in, we're not losing vaccine, we're just moving it to either someplace else or later in the week.
And and maybe I misstated my question, but is there any leftover vaccine at the end of the week? Are we still able to utilize all of that that we've received and then waiting for more the following week?
We're based, I mean, you know, not exactly we, cause our shipments are on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But we are, we're not, we don't have any in storage, we're using it all up as we go. And if we don't, if we're getting, if we have a little bit extra, but Sutter's not getting some or Adventist isn't getting some, we'll, we're in touch with them and working with them. Or if we get extra, we'll we'll send it to Safeway or, you know, so we're working with the community partners and it's going out into the community and getting into people's arms one way or the other.
Okay, now, thank you for that. I know that some counties are struggling while some counties are doing great and I think we're in the latter where we're actually able to get rid of all of our vaccines. I I've heard of some counties still having about thirty percent at the end of the week left over because they haven't formalized their vaccine clinics quite yet. So right now, you're doing food and agriculture as well as everything previous to that. Does that include restaurants? Cause I know I read a long time, not a long time ago, but a couple of months ago, that the number one profession that's been hit by COVID is chefs. Cause they're in tight quarters, there's not much for social distancing, just making sure and checking to see if restaurants are part of the food and agriculture process.
Right, any of the things where people are preparing or 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 dealing with food, where feeding the public basically
Perfect.
is included in that.
Perfect, thank you so much for that. I did ask the, cause what what Supervisor Pisca brings up is something that is of concern to me as well. Obviously, I've been vocalizing the issue of us utilizing the limited amount of vaccines for our populations. There's, it's never gonna be a hundred percent watertight, but I think we've been doing a good job of trying. But I think the state is doing things that are gonna really test us to be able to get those vaccines to our population. I asked the state what measures they put in place for sending more vaccines for the highest risk to ensure that those actually do get to the highest risk. And we have an elevated risk population and I wanna make sure that it gets to those people. Are we gonna be checking zip codes? How are we, cause it's basically they're sending it to public health, there's nothing, the state that I believe from what they've told me that they are putting into place to ensure. So it seems that it gets, the the responsibility of ensuring it gets to the right folks is landing on public health. What what is our process to ensure that the truly vulnerable that we're receiving these vaccines for are being sought out and and receiving the vaccines?
Well, the, this is part of the strategy of planning on moving an extra site down to an extra day down at the Clear Lake end of the lake. That's where more of, we're having, there's more demand that we have not been able to fill down at that end of the lake. And there's more folks that are more vulnerable down at that end of the lake. In terms of the zip codes, there's more people, there's more of the population in those vulnerable zip codes at that end of the lake. And there's fewer outlets, you know, so Lakeview Clinic's done some, Tribal Health has done some vaccines. Sutter's been very good about getting out there and Safeway has done it, but all at the other end of the lake. And then down at the Clear Lake end of the lake, it's us and Adventist. And one of the, when when the shipments dried up because of the weather in the Midwest, those, that impacted the Clear Lake end of the, the Clear Lake sites more. And the site that we're using to vaccinate people doesn't expand as well to accord, to accommodate more people. That in Lakeport, we can do, we can probably do a thousand a day there just in terms of space. At the Red Bud Park, we're not able to do that and especially there's concerns now about the fishing tournaments and not interfering with the docks and all that kind of stuff. Fishing tournaments and not interfering with the docks and all that kind of stuff. So. We're, what we're trying to do is figure out how to expand the site over there to get more vaccine out for folks. And um, so that's one piece. The other piece is we're trying to get uh, better outreach into the Latino community through the. Lake County Office of Education folks and um, also just uh, see if there's transportation needs. The Lake County Transit is willing to take people to the vaccine sites for free. Uh, you know, so there's some different things like that going on, but uh, that's uh, you know. The state, uh, the state says they're going to help us and they ask what, what kind of resources we need, but. You know, nothing really has been forthcoming at this point. So I think you're right. I think it is pretty much on us to do that. And um, so part of it is, is to try to get the community partners that are connected with these communities. To help us get them appointments and get them in.
So, uh, I appreciate that and I appreciate um, the wanting to expand in Clear Lake. And yeah, you, you are accessing a much larger population. Uh, you have Clear Lake Oaks right nearby, more accessible to folks from Middletown and Hidden Valley and Lower Lake as well, uh, than going all the way to Lakeport. Um. What I want to ask is. Again, it, it's the a- access to um, our vaccine, because it literally is our vaccine. We're, we're being seen as a jurisdiction. Uh, and they're sending it to us. Is it, wh- what is the, the? What is the amount of work needed to find out approximately how many people from out of county are coming through attempting? To get it. Because I, I'm going to be honest, I'm leaning towards, should we be asking these counties to pay us for your time? Because you're, we're receiving vaccines for our people, but yet we're utilizing our staff to vaccinate people that should go to their counties to get that. Um, and, and I'm just wondering if the numbers are large enough that it's, uh, yes, that's something we should be discussing. Or if the larges are small, the, the numbers are small enough that it's just not even worth the time to even do that. I, I'm just kind of. Curious if it's possible to bring us those numbers next time approximately, because I don't expect anyone to count specifics. Uh, just so that we have a better idea, because I want your time to be used in the most efficient manner for our community. To get the need that they, they, uh, that they need. Um, and, and this is just a hurdle that. Uh, I don't see us winning on our end. I think that uh, with the lack of resources that many of our folks have. That in the competition with surrounding counties who have more resources, we're going to end up uh, getting further and further behind. Um, so I, just, uh, just a thought. Um, I did also have, um. The same conversation that Supervisor, Supervisor Simon had, uh, with Carrie West. Appreciated her calling and asking questions. I, I do want to say to Ernesto Padilla, uh, very happy. Uh, to hear about how much Tribal Health is reaching out to the community. We are the only county with a Tribal Health. Uh, facility that is reaching out to non-natives right now for vaccinations. And I couldn't appreciate that more because it's really about the whole community and how quickly we can get the vaccination out there. Uh, and the fact that they're helping out like that is, is tremendous for all of us. Um. Vaccination sites, you said about uh, possibly adding one in uh, Clear Lake and taking one away uh, from Lakeport. Uh, while I don't disagree with that at all, I'm wondering, is it? A huge burden to look at? And I know that Blue Shield will bring this and this is why I bring this up. We spoke with Carrie West about Blue Shield a lot. Uh, about setting one up in the Lucerne area or setting one up in the Middletown area where right now those who don't have transportation. Uh, may have struggles to reach uh, the areas.
Well, um, yeah, I, I, I mean, clearly this is. Suboptimal in terms of getting some of the folks in other places in, in the county and um. You know, ideally we would set up a mobile site and um. Have a, a mobile unit that goes around to different places. We're requesting that when we do these reports to the state and to the TPA and all that. And um, you know, I find it. I, 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 I think it'll be a while before we get that kind of support, but we are asking for it. You know, again, you know, like I mentioned last week, we are actually staffing. These four days of sites and you know, you can see what the weather looks like today. People are going to be outdoors. There's twenty-five to thirty people we're getting to staff every day. For four days a week. So it's basically twenty-five to thirty full-time jobs of people, you know, who, most of them are. Have other responsibilities and uh, it's a huge lift. And now we're starting to bring in some of the temp. Folks and we've got a little bit of the structure set up so that it's going. And then, you know, we were initially hoping to do some of these mobile sites, but um. I think we're going to be doing these sites for the next three or four months. And so it's really a staff, a huge staffing need. And um, and with all these changes going, we need people who are pretty nimble and pretty able to help. Make the moves to what the next thing is and then to start staffing. Other sites in Lucerne and in Middletown. I, we just, you know, I, we don't really, we're struggling to do what we're doing now. And to add more is probably un. Uh, uh, not, not very realistic unless we get some more help.
And supposedly from what Carrie West was telling me, that's what the TPA will be here for is to get hard to reach populations. So hopefully they can do that. They also mentioned that they are not here to take over public health. They will be here as a collaborator to provide assistance in making sure that we are doing everything we can. Um, and also uh, that they would be mostly, most likely happy. Uh, that we have an ethics committee and possibly uh, want to be a part of that or something of the kind, depending on what your thoughts are on that. But. Uh, those were the levels of conversation that I had with uh, Carrie West. And as of yesterday, also in my CSAT phone call with the state, not only are we looking at the uh, lowest health metrics. Zip codes for extra vaccine, uh, but I had submitted the same data about two weeks ago to the state and I provided that to you as well, Dr. Pace. That those that had the most deaths and the most case rates of uh, COVID seem to not have the highest levels of vaccination. Uh, and now the state as of yesterday is looking to uh, provide higher levels of vaccines to the hardest hits. Uh, counties in the state. So hopefully. Our equity uh, stuff will be a lot better because it hasn't been perfect. Um, but I don't think it ever will be either. Uh, I think that's all the, the questions that I have uh, on here. I appreciate you talking about folks who don't have a primary doctor, how they can still go through the process and to get an appointment. I think that's an important thing to note. Uh, so I appreciate that. And again, I, I'm done. If there's any other comments or questions from the board?
A final comment, obviously, uh, in a conversation ad with uh, Carrie West, again, Dr. Pace, I want to thank you and all the volunteers and the staff at Public Health. And all the other disaster workers that we have on. I know, as you say, it's stretched really thin. Uh, but those clinics are going very well. Nothing but positive feedback that has come, especially with our senior communities. Um. Every day somebody went, just got their second shot. We're very impressed as, as it's gone on. And I know that it's volunteers and folks that just care about our community. So today, once again, I just want to say. Thank you very much to your department and all the volunteers that are helping roll out this vaccine, uh, distribution and everything that's happening. I know it's not, you know, it's not perfect. I know we don't have enough staff and, but you guys are doing a great job. And I just want to thank everybody for their hard and dedication, dedicated work. Uh, to our Lake County constituents.
Thanks Supervisor. Supervisor Crandall, did you have something as well?
Yes, um, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks again to uh, Dr. Pace, uh, for, for all the work you're doing and the communication. Uh, that you're having with the Tribal Health and whatever, whatever you can with the state. I know it's frustrating. I know, um, I had a meeting. Couple of weeks back with the community, uh, about some situations when it comes to the North Shore and, and crime and things like that. And. Um, we're, we're, the, the courts are backed up. And so I know the Ethics Committee that, that's put together is thinking about different ideals and. Um, you know, people to, to make sure that they're vaccinated, but I, I, I don't know if they're talking about this or not, but I just wanted to. Put it out there that the courts are backed up and some of the people that are abusing the system. Are knowing that they'll get cited and released. And so I don't know if there's a, i- i- if it's. Because of not having personal court or whatever the case may be, I just know that they're postponing it. But if there's any way we can, we can get that recognized and worked on so that. We could start mitigating that number of, of criminal activity, because I know people are just taking advantage of it. Uh, they're getting out. Going and re, you know, re-offending and, and, and knowing they're just going to be cited and released. And so. Um, but I know we're, we're barely gaining traction. I'm not trying to push this forward as like, do it right now. I just want to make sure that. It's, it's in people's mind that that's part of what's going on when it comes to some of the dumping and some of the leaving the cars. All of those different attributes that happens in criminal activity in Lake County. Um, there's, there's a group of people that understand that. Hey, I'll just get cited and released, so I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing. So there's any way we could start, you know, inching in somehow, um, whatever we can do to get. Uh, you know, the, you know, defense attorneys or, or victim witness or whoever works with this public aspect, you know, any type of uh. Um, offers for vaccinations.
Very much. Uh, I do have uh, one question to the board and one last comment to uh, Dr. Pace, maybe as an idea. Uh, to bring to the Ethics Committee, if you agree with this. I know that some other counties actually might have been out of state. Uh, for people that don't have transportation, for people that are uh, very isolated. Um, that they were saying that if you give them a ride to get a vaccination, not only will they get the vaccination, but you can get the vaccination as well. Uh, for helping somebody that's vulnerable to get to the vaccine clinic. So not sure if that's something that uh, you think would be a good idea to make sure that we can reach to those hard to get folks. Uh, but just wanted to put that thought out there, uh, for you to just uh, play around with. And then lastly, I did ask Dr. Pace, and I don't want to direct Dr. Pace without consensus from the board. I asked him about collecting uh, rough data on uh, how many people from out of county are coming through. Is that something you guys would like to see as well? Or is that something that we just drop it right here? I see one nod.
We, we need to keep paying close attention to that.
I, I agree. Definitely. If, if the state is pri- prioritizing vaccine for our heart-hit areas, but then they let anybody come in. Um, that's defeating the purpose of that. So.
Okay. So, uh, there we, perfect. I just wanted that consensus rather than directing Dr. Pace. And hopefully just a quick slash, uh, uh, on a page to help keep track is as simple as it gets. And I don't, I hope that we didn't ask for something that's uh. Adding more difficulty and burden to those that are working hard at the vaccine clinics to get people through and done. Uh.
I did, I did just want to make a comment because every request we do make, uh, as it was just said, does add one more step and one more process. Uh, for the volunteers. And I, and I understand tracking those numbers through the state system and other thing, but. You know, the reality is every time we make a request to this board, we just talked about it. You know, we have volunteers that have been working hard. Every time we do it, it's another step and another process that has to happen, uh, you know, at the vaccine clinic. So the reality is. Can't say, I hope this isn't another step because it, it is adding another step to the process. I just want that clarified.
Right. Well, I still hope it's as simple as it can get, a- a- as it can be. It is a step, yes. Uh, does that change any of the consensus of the board to still request for that information?
If, if it's simple, I think we need this information to be able to fight for our community, making sure that our community is getting vaccinated and. And not outsiders, because I, I know that there's many people that will drive here to be able to get a vaccine if they're able to and. And our, we need to make sure we're taking care of our community.
We also have to, have to have the data to back it up. If we're going to be going to the state and saying this is happening and um, we need to remedy it, we have to have that data.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room. Thank you for your patience, everybody, as we've gone through our deliberation. Uh, anybody with a question, comment, suggestion, anything?
All right. I've sent a, a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
We must have answered all of their questions. Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any further comments or questions before we move on?
No, just thank you, Dr. Pace, for everything you do.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pace, for your report and to Sarah as well. I did appreciate that she added the percentages on there that I requested last week. That helps out. Um, and we will see you next week and uh, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.